Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. It's truly wonderful to see so many people in attendance this evening. Thank you for being with us. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order, and we have six members present along with our student member, so we do have a quorum. So I'll declare a quorum. It's my pleasure to introduce Emma Swan. Emma is a fifth grade student at Rockland Woods Elementary School, and Emma is here this evening to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello again, Emma.
Hi.
It's nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
So Emma, do you have some folks with you that you would like to introduce this evening?
Yes, tonight I have my dad with me and my principal, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us and here in support of Emma. So Emma, are you having a great experience in fifth grade at Rockland Woods?
I am.
You are? What do you enjoy most in your studies?
I love the teachers at Rockland Woods. They're really nice.
They're really nice?
Yeah.
Are they teaching you?
Yes.
Yeah, that's important. That's very important. And I understand you're on the cross-country team?
Yeah, I recently just raced in cross-country.
Uh-huh. You like to run, obviously?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, and where do you finish typically?
I finished 11th this year.
Wow. Well, congratulations on that. And I see here from my notes that you love reading?
I do. It's my favorite subject in school.
Mine, too. Mine, too. And science?
Yes.
Yeah, which science? Is there a particular area of science you enjoy?
Lately in school, I've loved learning about the spheres in science.
Uh-huh.
The geosphere, biosphere, hydrosphere, and atmosphere.
Wow. Well, I'd love to have a conversation with you about that. I'm sure you could teach me a lot. So let's get back to the reading, because that's my passion. Do you have a favorite author?
I really love Roald Dahl.
Yeah. Do you have a favorite Dahl book?
Matilda is one of my favorites.
That's a good one. That's a good one. Well, I have one other bit of information here that I'd like to talk with you about, and it says that you are a mid-Atlantic champion and Maryland State Champion Competitive Twirler.
Yes.
So I'm thinking that's a baton that you're twirling?
Yes, I'm a baton twirler.
Yeah, and are you in a group?
Yes, I twirl with protege twirling team.
Ah. Wow, a champion. That's awesome. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
All right. Colleagues, do you have anything you would like to ask Emma? Anything you'd like to know?
I would like to thank you so much for speaking into the mic so we could all hear you.
Emma, do you have anything you'd like to ask us?
I don't think there's anything, no.
No? Well, I want to thank you again for being here and leading us in the pledge this evening, and good luck to you and your studies at Rockland Woods.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you. At this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion of the agenda? All those in favor of approval? We have six affirmative. Student member concurs, so we have an approved agenda. This time, we'll have approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, September 19th, 2023.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zedmeyer. Okay, colleagues, we're voting on the minutes of the closed session dated September 19th, 2023. All those in favor of approval? We have six affirmative, so we have an approved set of minutes.
President Williams, I move for the approval of business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, September 19th, 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zedmeyer. Colleagues, are there any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of September 19th? Okay, all those in favor of approval? All right, we have five abstentions, one abstention. So that set of minutes is approved.
President Williams?
I move for the approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, October 10th, 2023.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those are closed session minutes of October 10th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving those closed session minutes dated October 10th, raise your hand. All right, we have six affirmative. Those are approved.
President Williams, I move for the approval of closed session minutes open portion dated Tuesday, October 10th, 2023.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zedmeyer. Okay, colleagues, we're voting on the open portion of the closed session, those minutes dated October 10th. All those in favor? All right, we have six affirmative. Those are approved.
President Williams?
I move for the approval of work session minutes dated Tuesday, October 10th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zedmeyer. Do we have any additions or corrections to the work session minutes dated October 10th? Okay, all those in favor of approval? Okay. We have six affirmative, so those are approved. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to Dr. Zedmeyer for the first part of his superintendent's report. Dr. Zedmeyer?
Thank you, President Williams and members of the board. I'm starting my report this evening with our first student recognition of the 2023-24 school year. Tonight, we're recognizing the National Merit Commended Scholars who are representing three different WCPS schools. This year, we also have a semifinalist to recognize, and this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Helen Huffer, our supervisor of school counseling, to introduce these students who have demonstrated exemplary achievements on the PSATs.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Zedmeyer. We would like to recognize National Merit Scholars for 2024. The following students are being recognized as commended scholars based on the selection index scores from the 2022 PSAT. Graham Snyder, North Hickers Town High School. Daniel O'Donoghue, North Hickers Town High School. Maggie McAndrew, South Hickers Town High School. List, Williamsport High School. Please join me in congratulating these students. Now we're going to sit down to jump up again. The following student is being recognized as a National Merit semifinalist based on the selection index score from the 2022 PSAT, and who has the opportunity to compete for the National Merit Finalist Scholarship based on additional academic information. Reed Alt House, North Hickers Town High School. Please. [applause] All right, one, two, three. One, two, three, one more, one, two. Congratulations. Wonderful. Got it.
Week. WCPS uses this framework in our WCPS Code of Conduct, and these principles transcend our unique differences, and they can universally be applied to give us a common set of values and morals. Thank you, Ms. Huffer.
Thank you. As we mark Character Counts Week in our schools, we're reminded of the importance of character in shaping our educational community. Our values and principles are a significant component of who we are individually and collectively. This week is a special time to reflect on the six pillars of character: respect, responsibility, fairness, trustworthiness, caring, and citizenship. These universal values guide our interactions, decision-making, and overall behavior within our schools, among our family and friends, and throughout our community. Character education isn't just a lesson, it's a way of life within our schools. It's about nurturing the qualities that make students and staff alike better human beings. By doing so, we create a positive, welcoming environment where every individual feels valued and respected. Thank you for recognizing and celebrating Character Counts Week. Together, let's continue to build schools and a community where character truly counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huffer.
Thank you.
We are also in the midst of National School Bus Safety Week. WCPS recognizes we carry our community's most precious cargo to and from our schools each and every day. I'll ask Mr. Brian Johnson, our Director of Transportation, to share more about our professionals who work so hard to keep our students safe as they travel to and from school.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about National School Bus Safety Week. Twice each school day, 20,000 students rely on at least 170 of our school buses, traveling over 3.1 million miles in a year. The safety of our community's children on their way to and from school is paramount, and it's a mission we undertake with dedication. Our transportation department's success is a result of the commitment and hard work of our drivers, attendants, crossing guards, maintenance team, contractors, and office staff, but beyond our efforts, the safety of our students requires a collective commitment from our entire community. This week, we observe National School Bus Safety Week, emphasizing that school buses are the safest means of ground transportation for our children. Most transportation-related incidents involving students occur outside the bus, emphasizing the importance of ongoing advocacy about school bus safety. For our motoring public, remember that it's illegal to pass a school bus with its red lights flashing and stop arm extended. Passing a school bus with its lights activated is extremely dangerous. In fact, two of the six fatalities in 2021 nationwide have been attributed to vehicles running the red lights of a school bus. Last year, WCPS recorded at least 46 stop-arm violations in a single day. Using this conservative number, that accounts for 8,280 illegal stop-arm violations per school year here at WCPS. For our WCPS students and families, a very simple safety practice is simply to arrive five minutes early at the bus stop to avoid rushing, reducing the risks associated with running towards the bus. Parents, we encourage you to talk to your children about safety guidelines, encouraging attentiveness and adherence to the bus driver's instructions. Students should always stay at least three giant steps clear of the bus until it comes to a complete stop and the doors are open, activating those red lights. To conclude, I encourage anyone who has an opportunity to come across one of our school bus drivers, attendants, or crossing guards to give them a friendly wave and a thank you. They do incredible work each and every day keeping our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Continuing with our safety theme, it's also America's Safe Schools Week. Last Tuesday, our Board of Education and the safety staff discussed various ongoing and future initiatives to keep our schools safe and secure. This time, I'll ask Mr. Steve Ganley, our supervisor of school safety and security, to come forward and share some more information to our community in terms of how we keep our schools safe and supportive.
Thank you. Good evening. During America's Safe Schools Week, we come together to emphasize the vital role that all stakeholders play in ensuring the safety of our schools. Our schools are the heart of the community, and they help shape the future of our children. Their safety is paramount. Together, as a united community, we must support and advocate for safe schools. Safety extends beyond the walls of our classrooms. It encompasses the well-being of our students, teachers, staff, and the entire school environment. By actively participating in safe school initiatives and fostering an environment to open communication, we create a culture of safety that extends to every aspect of our community. Our involvement ensures that our children can focus on learning and growing rather than fear and distractions. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and our superintendent for making safe schools a year-round priority. This week is an opportunity to promote awareness of the measures we can take to enhance school safety. Together, we can make a difference in the life of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ganley. Ganley, I want to thank you and our safety team members, as well as our school-level leaders and teachers for your effort and commitment each day in keeping our schools safe. And as I want to, I just want to reference again just last week, our board engaged in a very healthy discussion as they received updates regarding safety and security. That is a continued focus of WCPS, so thank this board for your level of engagement in making safety and security a priority in our school district. President Williams, members of the board, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, so Superintendent Zedmeyer, thank you very much. It looks like we have some additional time for you following your business. Am I correct on that? You did do the update, is what I'm seeing there, not a continuation of your report. Okay. At this time, we'll have public comment. I have no one on the list who has signed up in advance. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak? Okay, before we begin, I'd like to read from Board Policy KD regarding public comment. Each person wishing to address the board's education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County public schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify individuals or an individual. Individuals wishing to address the board who do not sign up prior to the start of the meeting will be required to sign the log located at the speaker's table for the purpose of the meeting's minutes. I think there's a log there, sir, for you to sign?
He did.
Okay, thank you. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. The chairperson reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on any particular topic, provided the issue in question has been presented and further comments would simply be repetitious. Following a speaker's presentation, the superintendent may designate a staff member to address that individual's concern, or may ask the speaker to contact a particular department or a particular staff member at an appropriate time. Mrs. Murray, is there a timekeeper? Mrs. Murray, would you like to explain how that works?
Five minutes on the timer. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll hold this up, and then when your five minutes are up, I'll hold this up.
Thank you.
And your name, sir?
My name is Chris Hyzer, H-Y-S-E-R.
Good evening, Mr. Hyzer.
I'm going to address a bullying tonight. Like I said, my name is Chris Hyzer. I'm a retired Maryland State Trooper, a chaplain, and also a candidate for CD6. I prepared a statement just to keep it in the time, so I wouldn't ramble on. Today, I want to address a pressing issue that affects the very heart of our school community: bullying. It's a problem that demands our collective attention, and it's our responsibility to create a safe, nurturing environment for every student. Bullying, in all of its forms, has no place in our schools, and not only harms the victims, but also tarnishes the values we hold dear: values of respect, kindness, and empathy. When we turn a blind eye to bullying, we risk compromising the educational experience for all. To combat bullying, we need to take a multifaceted approach. First and foremost, we must foster a culture of inclusion and respect. This means treating each other with kindness, recognizing and celebrating our differences, and being empathetic to the struggles of our peers. Remember, we all come from different backgrounds. Our diversity is what makes our school community vibrant and unique. However, we cannot cause harm to one community by pleasing another community. For example, biological males playing female sports, or changing in or using bathrooms of our daughters and granddaughters. Second, our dialogue is crucial. Encouraging students to speak up about bullying is a vital step in the right direction. Teachers, parents, and administrators must create a safe space for students to report bullying incidents without fear of retribution. By communicating openly, we can identify problems early and address them effectively. Lastly, we need to provide support for those affected by bullying. The emotional scars of bullying can last a lifetime, so it's essential that we offer counseling and resources to help victims heal. We also need to help bullies themselves understand the consequences of their actions and work towards rehabilitation and personal growth. Our schools are more than just places of education; they are the foundations of bright and harmonious futures. Let us pledge today to stand up against bullying, to protect the vulnerable, and to build a school community where every student feels valued and safe. Together, we can create an environment where kindness and respect flourish, and bullying has no place. Thank you all very much for hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyzer. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak at this time? Good evening.
Good evening. You supposed to fill this out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay. So I'm Ethan Lowen, and I wanted to congratulate those who participated in last month's school walkout. Protests like the ones that have occurred throughout our state and our country are made necessary in order to protect a growing number of students being harmed by policies created under the philosophy of diversity, equity, and inclusion. In this community, we first saw its effects more than two years ago when parents came to the school board protesting your social distancing and quarantining requirements for students, which damaged their social development and reduced their education progress to well below half the normal pace. Your policies were not used anywhere else, not at our workplaces, not even in many medical facilities. However, the diversity, equity, inclusion members of this board ignored the parents. Two months after that, parents came back to this board after discovering that there is pornography in our school libraries. When the parents asked this board to remove those books, this board had its attorney sit at this table and state that the pornography could not be removed because the Supreme Court had made it illegal for school boards to remove books unless the process used to purchase those books was not followed properly. Parents left that meeting shell-shocked, I mean dumbfounded, that the Supreme Court would make such a ruling. Parents looked into this board's statements because the well-documented but also common-sense knowledge of the harm that pornography causes children would not allow parents to accept that conclusion. What parents found is that this board had not told the truth. It didn't take long for parents to locate another school district in this state that had removed pornographic books. Additionally, not only are school boards not required to keep books in school libraries, they are actually required to have a process to remove them. In other words, what you asserted was not true. It was then that parents recognized the pattern, that the diversity, equity, and inclusion school board believes that its philosophy and its goals are superior to the family, and that is the first reason my protests are necessary. We must defend the supremacy of the family and the welfare of children. But as Martin Luther King noted, "If you are willing to accept injustice against one group, then every group is at risk for injustice." And now, in keeping with the policies of DEI, this board has allowed boys into female sports, causing the loss of a nearly 100-years-fight that began under women's suffrage, to now lose one of its most important victories: women's sports. The protests are also needed to protect the rights and privileges of female athletes. But there is a third group that also requires protection. Dr. Kenneth Zucker is the person whom the American Psychology Association chose to rewrite the definition of gender dysphoria in its most recent update to the Diagnostics and Statistics Manual, known as the DSM. The DSM is the American Psychology Association's guide to mental health issues. In the last update, which was 10 years ago, Dr. Zucker redefined gender dysphoria in relation to transgenderism, so there is now a broader set of criteria that qualifies as gender dysphoria. Interestingly, in the years since the update, Dr. Zucker has been speaking about how DEI school districts and other DEI institutions have used his edits of the DSM to justify their decisions. He and his team have divided the treatment of gender dysphoria in children into three treatment types plus a social component. Treatment number one is doing nothing, simply letting parents be parents. Treatment number two is including a mental health professional who has no view as to whether a child should transition; rather, they help with conflict resolution, understanding their emotions, et cetera. The results of those first two treatments are essentially the same, which is when a child experiences gender dysphoria, 75% to 85% of those children stop experiencing it as they progress through puberty, while 15% to 25% of children continue experiencing it after puberty. Then his team compared the third treatment option, which is when you put a child through transitioning steps, both socially and medically, which involves activities ranging from giving children a list of pronouns they could be using, to discussing transgenderism, even with children who have no signs or symptoms of it, to making transgenderism a social experience with groups and meetings and themed days, to involving mental health professionals who are trained to affirm a child's emotions and to believe that challenging a child's feelings is an extreme step to take, all the way up to using hormone blockers and surgery. A number of the activities involved in Treatment Plan III this school district does right now, and when parents have asked you to stop it, you have justified it. The result is that the percentage of children who continue to identify as transgender after puberty jumps from 15% to 25% to over 90%, depending on how deep the children are taken into these various activities. Last July, the American Academy of Pediatrics identified one set of activities that leads to 94% of children involved continuing to believe they have gender dysphoria post puberty. The point is that Treatment Plan III isn't measuring healthcare. It is measuring what happens when children's natural development is hijacked by targeting activities being socially engineered into their lives. That is the third group that needs protection: the victims of social engineering, along with female athletes, and the bedrock of society, which is the family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lowen. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? Okay, thank you. This time, we'll have board member response to public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to old business. Seeing none, we'll move to old business. Yes, good evening. Yes. If you could please put your name and contact information there.
I'm sorry you have very short notice. I didn't know. I just prepared myself a few notes. My main few points are about the safety of the children in the schools. I am blessed with four kids, too. I'm residing in Boonsborough area, so my kid goes to Boonsborough and Greenbrier Elementary. So, just recent tragic happened in Plainfield. So, my kids, you know, asked me that, I mean, they asked me a couple of questions that I don't have answer for them: why this thing happened, what did he do wrong, why he got stabbed. So these are all very sad questions they asked me, which I don't know how to justify these at front of them. But again, when I try to discuss with them, I have to have some answer, so I just start with them that, you know, this is one individual act who is mentally sick, who did it, it has nothing to do with religions, that, you know, he stabbed that kid with a knife. So these kind of things, again, then we talk about bullying, and, you know, these kind of education I taught, I tell them, too, that at our house, you know, we educate them to respect your teacher. For example, I didn't born here, but the society where I come from, still if I go back home, if I see my older teachers, I still kiss their hands. That kind of respect, we, I come from and I teach my kids, too. So, I mean, the whole thing, well, this was a very sad event, that's why I just came up to share. I have a feeling you have a same sorrow as I feel for that kid, whatever that sad tragic happened in Plainfield. I've been in USA for over twenty-nine years. I was very blessed. I came here at a very young age. I initially came in California. I did my B B and M B in business, and then I went to New York, New Jersey, did some jobs. Finally, I settled myself, like twenty-two years ago, in Washington County. And I'm also blessed, I'm a very successful business entrepreneur, to support this community, create jobs in this community. So my whole point is just putting together, I appreciate you are, you see this picture as a very Broadway, as I see it, but somehow, you know, we should have some kind of mechanism to teach our kids at school to, their religion, really, there's no such a religion who tell you bullying, or hurt somebody, or do anything. So that's what I teach my kids, too, at home, too, that really has nothing to do with religion. It is some individual act who is mentally sick, that's where it is. So that's why I just want to share a few my thoughts, really nothing, that I was prepared to come here to give a speech. So I hope you are doing on your end best effort to put together all your efforts and security and all these things. So I appreciate all your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Could you tell us your name, please? I didn't take your-
My first name is Malik, and last name is M-E-H-B-O-D.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Anila Haq, and I am a member of this Hagerstown for the last thirty-five years. I've been living here. My four children, they grew up in Hagerstown, Maryland. They're all graduated, and they're in their professional schools and professional lives. At this point, my main concern is about the children in our community, Muslim community, most of them, what's going on in the other side of the world, and that is definitely hitting us at home here as well, in our community. So I want to make sure that there is, in Michigan, there has happened that six-year-old child has been stabbed twenty-six times. Their landlord came in and he stabbed him and his mother. His mother, he definitely passed away, which is very sad. And he was from Palestine. He's a Muslim child, and his mom is a very critical condition, and we are very concerned at this point about the community of Hagerstown. And I would like to know that what measurement we are taking it to protect our children from the Muslim community, and also the girls who wear this scarf. I have young girls sitting there, and they are part of this community as well. And what kind of support and measurement and letter has been sent to take the measurement for those children? So I would really appreciate that if you guys can take a look into it and give them a sense of security and sense of not getting bullied, because my daughter, Mahin Haq, she was very active in Smithburg School, and right now she got graduate from law college. And thank you very much to the school that they educate him, and she took it seriously, and she's graduate, and she's practicing a law in Washington, DC. So I'm looking forward to the safety of this new generation. All children, they get bullied, whoever get bullied, they're my children, and I am here to stand up for them, and I want to make sure, please, take a measurement and let us know what is the school board is going to take measurement for those children. I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Do you want me to leave this letter here? You guys can look at it. I will send it. I will mail it, that's all.
If you want to.
I can get it. Thank you very much.
Check for it. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, once again, board member comment, response? Nothing? Okay. Old Business, our first action item under Old Business, is the second reading of proposed changes to Policy CM, School District Annual Reports. We have Mrs. Ram with us.
Thank you, President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Savine. The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to Policy CM at its Public Business Meeting on September nineteenth, 2023. The Policy Committee had posted on Board Docs and the School Systems website a public notice seeking comments on the proposed changes to the policy following the Board's approval of the first reading. No comments have been received. The Committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy CM.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy CM entitled School District Annual Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the second reading of proposed changes to Policy CM entitled School District Annual Reports. All those in favor? We have six affirmative. Student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Okay, under New Business, our first action item is this evening's consent agenda. We have Mr. Scott Bakdel, our supervisor of purchasing, presenting. Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Savine. Tonight, I have seven items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval. And before we go, I'd like to have Mr. Johnson come up. In our Finance Committee meeting, we had a question on number six, the sale of school buses, and kind of the definition and methodology of the word surplus buses. So I'll let Brian address that.
Sure. Yeah, when we were referring to a surplus bus, we're not referring to any kind of reduction or increase in fleet. Those are simply buses that have reached their twelve-year life cycle, as defined by Comar, and so those buses will be placed out of service over the coming year.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for electrical distribution replacement at Boonsborough Middle School to Free State Baltimore LLC at a cost of $1,324,000. Electrical distribution replacement at M.A.K. Dowell Elementary School to Free State Baltimore LLC at a cost of $666,946. Boiler replacement at Hancock Middle High School to Borley Mechanical Contracting LLC at a cost of $1,054,500. Boiler replacement at Williamsport Elementary School to Denver Elec, Inc. at a cost of $550,800. School buses to Kneel Truck and Bus Center at a cost of $2,113,101. The sale of up to twenty buses per Policy DN and paint-related supplies to Sherwin-Williams at percent-discount pricing.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions? Any discussion? No? Okay. Okay. False start there? All right. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve this evening's consent agenda, as read by Mr. Bickford. All those in favor of approval? All right, we have six affirmative. Student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bakdel.
Thank you.
Next, we have the building dedication plaque for the Diesel Technology Center at the Boyd J. Michael III Technical High School. Good evening, Mr. Prue. Good evening, Mr. Rollins.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Savine. The matter before you is approval of the building dedication plaque for the Diesel Technology Center at the Boyd J. Michael III Technical High School. This is in keeping with Policy FFB, to place the appropriate plaque on new structures as they are built, and this, I think, will effectively close out that project. And the design of the plaque is included in your packet.
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes. Go ahead. I'll make the motion to approve the design of the building dedicated plaque for the Diesel Technology Center at Boyd J. Michael III Technical High School.
Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the design of the building dedication plaque for the Diesel Technology Center at Boyd J. Michael III Technical High School. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. We have an approved plaque. Thank you. All right. The next agenda item is the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for fiscal year 2024. We have Mr. Prue and Mr. Michael Stauffer, Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations. Good evening.
Thank you again, Mrs. Williams. At this point, we bring you to the approval of our Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. I think, as we tell you every year, this is the third leg of our trilogy: the Educational Facilities Master Plan, the Capital Improvement Plan, and the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. To give you just a quick rundown, this is the story that really talks about the performance results of our maintenance and operations teams, the plan system and process improvements, staffing and budgetary status, planned actions, and as like we say with all of these reports, they're updated annually to reflect new standards, new protocols, new procedures. And I've asked Mr. Stauffer, really, to give you a quick rundown of some of the highlights of what's in the book here.
So we'll start with the facility outcomes for preventive maintenance. So this is the activity we try to do ahead, so we don't have any failures. So the biggest thing here is the percentage of work orders completed within thirty days is a fifty-one percent. Our goal is a lot higher, but this is the highest we've been for quite some time. So the PMs are coming along. They're doing a lot better to make our schools more safe, more open to everyone, and it's really working out well with our PM system. Some of the, one of the things to point out is the dollars spent on PM work completed by staff compared to PM work completed by contractors. We bring in contractors because we either don't have the expertise or the tools to do some of the inspections and some of the work. So that's why there is such a disparity there. So we like to get to a point where our internal forces are doing more than our contracted forces, and that's one of our goals going forward. All right, corrective maintenance. As you see, we had eight thousand six hundred fifty-four corrective maintenance work orders opened. This year, we're on a higher pace right at the moment. For the past month, we've had a little over a thousand work orders entered in the system. So I think the message is getting out. Maintenance can get to it. Maintenance can get it fixed. So more people are starting to put more requests in to have some repairs done. It's a good thing. Work orders closed within thirty days, a seventy-one percent on the corrective side. The team has always focused on corrective maintenance because that's what needs to be done, keep the schools open, keep the schools operating correctly. Once again, the dollars spent on corrective work by contractors is high, but also it's good because we were short on staff this past year, so we had to bring in some external help, and it's really working out, making the buildings better and more open. So this last one, the meantime of repair days is twenty-three point seven five. So that's just saying, from the time a work order is open to the time it's closed, it's about twenty-four days. So our goal is a lot lower, but that's working pretty well. So facility outcomes, custodial. We have custodians trained on the custodial scope of work within two years of being hired. We're at a hundred percent. We hit every custodian in the scope of work to make sure that they know what they're doing, how to do it, and everything's working really well. Custodial duties completed adequately during the past year. We had a hundred and three custodians evaluated. They had an average rating of eighty-seven percent. Our goal is to get all custodians this coming year and have at least an eighty-five percent. You say, why is it less than what we actually did this past year? Because we're going to capture everyone, and there's going to be a lot of new people that are not going to be doing as well as the more seasoned individuals. So eighty-five is a good goal for us. So this facility outcomes, facility usability. So this is the days that the school is available for teaching children. So facility days operational percentage, we had one school with one day was not operational. We had a little bit of a flood two hours before school was to open, and we just couldn't get it cleaned up in time. So given that, we have a hundred and eighty school days, forty-six schools. That's eight thousand two hundred and eighty operational school days, which makes it ninety-nine point nine percent operational throughout the county. Our resources, our staffing, MNOs, experienced numerous personal changes over the last year. We have, still continue to have a big turnover of custodians. We are constantly hiring, and we're constantly losing. So it's holding steady now at about ten people down, but we're hoping to get that filled and have people stay a little bit longer. Hiring experienced maintenance personnel, both technical and leadership, we actually have some good plumbers- Our goal is to get all custodians this coming year and have at least an 85%. You say, why is it less than what we actually did this past year? Because we're going to capture everyone, and there's going to be a lot of new people that are not going to be doing as well as the more seasoned individuals. So 85 is a good goal for us. So this facility outcomes, facility usability. So this is the days that the school is available for teaching children. So facility days operational percentage, we had one school with one day was not operational. We had a little bit of a flood two hours before school was to open, and we just couldn't get it cleaned up in time. So given that, we have 180 school days, 46 schools. That's 8,280 operational school days, which makes it 99.9% operational throughout the Our resources, our staffing, MNOs, experienced numerous personal changes over the last year. We have still continue to have a big turnover of custodians. We are constantly hiring, and we're constantly losing. So it's holding steady now at about 10 people down, but we're hoping to get that filled and have people stay a little bit longer. Hiring experienced maintenance personnel, both technical and leadership. We actually have some good plumbers. We hired some electricians. We hired good HVAC people, and they are really making a difference in the repairs that are being done. We also hired a gentleman to manage the maintenance area that was formerly, he held a position similar to mine in, which county was it?
Berkeley County.
Berkeley County, West Virginia. So he's very well-versed. He jumped right in as soon as he got here, and I'm very pleased. Adjustments to Department of Administrative Personnel. We actually moved one of our ops manager over to the MNO support manager when our person who was in that role retired. Doing really well. He is digging into the maintenance management system and making it sing. It's doing really well. And we have new ops manager that came in. It has over 20 years of experience in the custodial department with us. So he knew all the processes. He knows most of the people, and he's very well-versed in leadership. So he's really taking off tail. So our planned actions for this coming year is to continue providing professional development for departmental skill attainment. So we just want everybody that we have on staff to grow, learn more, be more effective. So we're going through some leadership chaining for custodians. They seem to have never had that in the past. So now we're trying to prepare those people for the next step, to be leaders and to be custodians. We're doing AED, first aid, and CPR training. We're doing aerial lift training and a lot more technical training to make sure everybody's safe and doing work properly. And we're going to learn, implement best practices identified during conferences and planned discussions with other counties, like we just had a MAB summit on freeze prevention. So we got a lot of good ideas from other counties on what they do to protect against freezes, and we had a little bit of freeze damage this past December. So we want to make sure that we don't have any more of that. Brightly, which is our maintenance management system, they have a yearly conference. I went to it this past year, along with the gentleman that's now leading that, and there were a lot of aha moments, things that we weren't aware of from the initial implementation of the system. So now it's really moving along a lot quicker. We joined Frederick County for a hiring interview cycle just to see how they do it. They do it a little bit differently than we do it, so we took some good ideas from them, and we started using it here. We have, well, I also converse with Chambersburg Area School District pretty often. The gentleman that's the director of Maintenance and Operations Affairs is my neighbor. So see him all the time. We talk a lot. So we're getting best practices off each other. And also, MAB also has a resource community where anyone in the county can put in ideas, ask questions, and it's really helpful. MAB's been a big friend to us.
I think in closing, you know, as we seek your approval of this year's report, I mean, the goal is to continually increase our efficiency on the preventative work orders, the PM side, so that we keep things sort of lubed and working. As we're doing those PMs, we're also able to pick up predictive maintenance. So we're catching that item and making repairs and adjustments before it breaks so that ultimately the smallest portion of our maintenance system is on corrective work orders. So that's the goal we're working towards, and the team is really doing a fantastic job, and some of the new hires have really just slid right in, you know, all across the trades and really digging in. So we're pleased with the progress we're making.
Thank you, both. Do we have a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the comprehensive maintenance plan for FY 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. And now, Mrs. Murray, you had a question.
Excuse me. When you hire custodians, what are the requirements you're looking for?
Well, we're really looking for someone that's wanting to learn. That's the biggest thing for us is, most people don't know how institutional custodianship is. So we just look for somebody that's really eager to learn, wants to know how to do things, wants to work with other people, wants to keep their schools clean, because a lot of them, their children, work here. So we really look at that. Do they really meet our mold of they want to take it on, they want to learn more, they want to move ahead?
How much training do they get once they get hired?
Oh, as soon as they walk in the door, well, before they come here, we actually send them some paperwork to read up on, tell them where to show up, who they're going to be working with, give them some type of idea of how things will go for the first few days. They are paired with someone for the first week or two just to see how they pick up what they need to do during the cleaning periods. Then, once they learn that well, they give them an area to see how they do, and they come back and rate them every couple of weeks just to see how things are going. And if they need any adjustments, we help them out with that. But it's a constant review, and we try to just train them as they go.
That onboarding process is something that we have actively been working on to improve upon, to make sure that the staff member is, you know, all the things you think of in the first day, are you greeted well? Do you feel like you're part of the team? Are you introduced to the team? I mean, custodial work can be a very solitary work, especially for our second shift crews and especially in our smaller buildings, where oftentimes, in our smaller buildings, there may be a single person there at night. So it's really getting them sort of built in and acclimated to the team that they're working with and their systems to make sure that they feel comfortable in their work. And so we're really focusing a lot of energy there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Williams, I'd like to speak to this. You know, during facilities, we go over a lot of this, and I have to just point out a couple of things. The PM is something new that we were really working on, trying to be preventive maintenance so that we don't have a lot of work orders. And I know that that's one of the things we talked about and how you're really focusing on that. And the coming years, that will hopefully see a lot less work orders and more things that are just running more smoothly. So I applaud you for working on that. The other thing I have to say is, you know, when you look at the number of all the people that come in our buildings and everything that possibly could go wrong, and we had one day at one school that we were actually not able to function, that is, I mean, it's unbelievable for the school system. I mean, 47 buildings and all the staff, and they were trying to get that school open that morning by rushing around, trying to get it, and it was just an accident that it happened. But, because it wasn't like a freeze, it was just somebody leaned against a...
Replacing a flush valve, and it just sort of went awry, and then it's a matter of getting to the shut-off quick enough to stop the flow of water.
So, you know, they're cross-training all their employees, so it's not like they just bring somebody in to take the trash out. These people are learning skills that will benefit the whole school system, you know, where they're running to turn off valves, they have to know where all the switches are. So these folks are very vital to our system, and to say that we only had one day down is just remarkable. I mean, and to Mike's team, I mean, that's, I said, that's just very unusual, and I can't believe that we, in this day and age, we only had that. So I applaud your whole team of doing that and even trying to get that school open that day, because I think you probably would have had another hour, you probably would have got there. And it was that close. So, you know, that team was really working.
And I think, Mr. Guest, you know, we really appreciate, you know, your words and that support of the team. And I think I would go another step further even to say, as a reminder, I think, you know, and I know Mr. Rollins is back there behind me for a little while, but, you know, we are the third or fourth average oldest buildings in the state, and we lost only one day. So I think that adds to it. That work on keeping up and having things from breaking is a whole lot harder when your buildings are old than when they're new. I think we realize that with any appliance or anything we have in our own homes.
And we brought that new gentleman in, and you brought him to facilities, and we met him from Berkeley. And you talked about how you had taken a lot of the old parts that were here sitting on shelves that we weren't ever going to use, and we've been able to get rid of those and start fresh and get the products that we need. I mean, that really was probably a burden to not have someone to do that. So, you know, to have that and then to be able to support out in the field, great job. Great job on that all the way around. So thank you.
I've had a really great team.
You do. You do. And you worked hard to do that. So, you know, congratulations, really.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. Before us, and that motion is to approve the comprehensive maintenance plan for fiscal year 2024. All those in favor? All right, we have six votes. Student member concurs. We have an approved plan. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is consideration of the Washington County Board of Education's 2024 Legislative Program and the approval of the Legislative Response Team members for the 2024 Maryland Legislative Session. Ladies and gentlemen, here.
The Board of Education Policy BJ states that the board is to discuss its legislative program on an annual basis. The board is also to establish its legislative priorities for state and federal legislation and establish a legislative response team. The Board of Education conducted public work sessions on October 10th and 17th, 2023 to discuss its core values, legislative priorities, and initiatives for the 2024 Maryland Legislative Session. The board also discussed the individuals to be considered for appointment by the Board of Education to serve on the Legislative Response Team for the 2024 session. The Board of Education will now formally adopt its legislative program as discussed at the work sessions on October 10th and 17th and appoint board members and staff to serve on the Legislative Response Team as discussed at the October 17th work session.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the Washington County Board of Education's 2024 Legislative Program for the upcoming Maryland Legislative Session as discussed at the work sessions on October 10th and 17th, 2023.
Ms. Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve our 2024 Legislative Program for the upcoming Maryland Legislative Session as we discussed on October 10th and 17th in work session. All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote of six. Student member concurs.
President Williams, I move to approve the appointment of the superintendent, the chief legal counsel, board president Melissa Williams, legislative representative Stephen Edwards, and the other board members as discussed at the work session today to the Legislative Response Team.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard you. Take your second. Colleagues, are there any discussion, any questions? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the appointment of the superintendent, Dr. Sobine, chief legal counsel, Mrs. Ram, board president Melissa Williams, legislative representative Stephen Edwards, Stan Stauffer, vice president, and Peter Bickford, all to the Legislative Response Team. Others in favor? All right, we have six affirmative, unanimous vote, with the student member concurring. Thank you, Mrs. Ram. You disappeared quickly. Okay, our next agenda item is a donation of $10,000 from the Nora Roberts Foundation to be used to support the Drama Club at Boonsborough High School. We have Dr. Heath Wilcox, our executive director for secondary education, presenting. Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Sobine, and board members. I am requesting approval of a gift of $10,000 from the Nora Roberts Foundation to support the Drama Club at Boonsborough High School.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Is there a motion?
Madam President.
I move to approve a gift of, I had to do this or Michael Bear would have killed him, of $10,000 from the Nora Roberts Foundation to be used to support the Drama Club at Boonsborough High School.
There's shedding a flood. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer, Vice President Stauffer, sorry. Okay, any questions, any discussion? Very generous gift from the Nora Roberts Foundation.
I do want to add that as a former teacher at Boonsborough, Nora Roberts Foundation has been so incredibly kind to our school. Just a big thank you to them.
Yes, truly. They have been, that foundation has been very generous to us and very supportive of everything at Boonsborough High School. Okay, so we're voting to approve a gift of $10,000 from the Nora Roberts Foundation to be used to support Boonsborough High School's Drama Club. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative. Student member concurs. Please extend our thank you, Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you.
Another donation. Now I'll let you share the information.
Sure. Good evening again. I am requesting approval of a gift of $11,694.75 from the Kevin Lum Memorial Fund through Morgansville Rorotan Club to be used to purchase six Bachi Court inflatable systems through Special Olympics Maryland for six of our high schools. Those high schools are Boonsborough High School, Clear Spring High School, North Hagerstown High School, Smithsburg High School, South Hagerstown High School, and Williamsport High School.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Is there a motion, please?
Madam President, move to approve a gift of $11,694.75, excuse me, from the Kevin Lum Memorial Fund through Morgansville Rorotan Club to purchase six Bachi Court inflatable systems through Special Olympics of Maryland for six high schools.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions, any discussion?
I just want to say that the Unified Sports Program is the ultimate, the true sportsmanship program in all high school athletics, and I think I can say that because I coached soccer for a lot of years, and sometimes the sportsmanship is lacking. But in unified sports, of which Bachi is a part, there's true sportsmanship all the time. I've never seen anything.
Moving to the vote, we're voting to approve a gift of $11,694.75 from the Kevin Lum Memorial Fund through the Morgansville Rorotan Club to purchase six Bachi Court inflatable systems through the Special Olympics Maryland for six high schools. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Okay, our next agenda item is the Third Amendment to the Naming Rights Agreement by and between the Board of Education of Washington County, and we have, between the Board of Education of Washington County, there's a word missing there in what I'm reading. Okay, Mrs. Ram is ready.
The Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation and the Board of Education entered into a naming rights agreement on November 19th, 2019. The naming rights agreement authorizes the foundation to identify entities and persons who'd be willing to donate funds in exchange for being granted naming rights to the Vincent Roth Grow Academic Center, school facilities located in the academic center, and the original Barbara Ingram School for the Arts School campus. The Board of Education, the foundation, entered into an amendment to the naming rights on November 3rd, 2020 in order to add naming rights for brick pavers that compose the front sidewalk outside of the school on South Potomac Street. The Board of Education, the foundation, entered into a Second Amendment to the naming rights agreement on December 7th, 2021 to modify the attachment of the naming rights agreement to include collaboration areas in the Vincent Roth Grow Academic Center. The purpose of this amendment to the naming rights agreement is to modify Attachment 1A to include acceptable parameters for the inscriptions on the brick pavers that compose the sidewalk in front of Barbara Ingram School for the Arts School Campus and Academic Center.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the Third Amendment to naming rights, to the naming rights agreement by and between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions, any discussion? All right, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the Third Amendment to Naming Rights Agreement by and between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation, Inc. All those in favor? All right, we have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. The next item is government entity settlement agreement with Altria. Is that how it's pronounced, Mrs. Ram?
Correct.
Altria. Altria? Mrs. Ram is presenting.
This is part of the Juul settlement. We came before, I came before the Board not too long ago for the first part. This is another part of that settlement. The Board of Education agreed in 2021 to join the Class Action Juul Labs, Inc., marketing, sales practices, and products liability litigation. Washington County Public Schools has received a gross settlement offer to resolve the claims against Altria Group, Philip Morris USA, and then the associated groups and entities that are part of Altria. The Board of Education must formally approve the settlement offer, after which time deductions, of course, for attorney's fees, case costs, and court ordered common benefit expenses assessment will be made. The Board of Education can expect to receive the net settlement, which has yet to be determined, after the court has appointed, excuse me, the court has approved the payment to the government entity qualified settlement account, asking the Board to approve that gross settlement amount.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the Government Entity Settlement Agreement with Altria Group, Inc., Philip Morris, USA, Inc., Altria Client Services LLC, Altria Enterprises LLC, and Altria Group Distribution Company.
Is there a second? Vice President Stauffer, any questions, any discussion? All right, we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the Government Entity Settlement Agreement with Altria Group, Inc., as read by Mr. Bickford. All those in favor? All right, we have six affirmative. Student member concurs, Sergeant Garry's. Thank you. And now we have some policies to look at. We have the First Reading of Proposed Changes to Policy BEE, Administrative Hearings and Appeals.
The Policy Committee reviewed Policy BEE at its public work sessions on September 4th and October 12th of this year. The Committee conducted the review at the request of staff because the policy had not been reviewed or updated in several years. The policy has been placed in the correct format. The Committee is recommending that the policy be updated to require the Board of Education to adopt rules and procedure to ensure fair and impartial administrative hearings and appeals, and to ensure due process. Such rules will govern all appeals and hearings within the Board's administrative and/or quasi-judicial function. The proposed changes to the policy allow for the Superintendent to promulgate an administrative regulation that will set forth the rules of procedure. The Committee is recommending that the Board of Education approve the First Reading of Proposed Changes to Policy BEE.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the Proposed Changes to Policy BEE entitled Administrative Hearings and Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions, any discussion? Nope, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve Proposed Changes to Policy BEE entitled Administrative Hearings and Appeals. All those in favor? All right, we have six affirmative. Student member concurs. We have an approved First Reading. And we have another First Reading of Proposed Changes to Policy KHC, Distribution and Posting of Community Information Materials in Schools.
The Policy Committee reviewed Policy KHC at its public work sessions on September 14th and October 12th of this year. The Committee conducted the review at the request of staff because the policy had not been reviewed or updated in several years. The policy has been placed in the correct format. The Committee is recommending a proposed change to the policy to make it clear that community information materials must align with the policies and regulations of the school system for them to be approved for distribution in schools. In addition, the Committee is recommending that advocacy groups also be prohibited from using schools for advertising or promoting the interests of the group. Lastly, the Committee is recommending language be added to the policy that reserves the right of the school system and not the entity requesting distribution of the community informational materials to determine those appropriate method of distribution. I'd just like to point out that what the changes made to this policy are cleaning up language and to solidify what we're already doing and to authorize a promulgation of regulations so we can ensure there are consistent procedures. It's not changing what we're already currently doing. The Committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the First Reading of Proposed Changes to Policy KHC.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the Proposed Changes to Policy KHC entitled Distribution and Posting of Community Information Materials in Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Stauffer. Any questions, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, especially with D about who decides, and why we don't have in there does not, that it needs to adhere to Washington County public school policies and administrative procedures. Just a clarification, because sometimes things that are posted do not comply with our policy and administrative procedures.
Things that go out through Peachjar, which is the preferred method? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about flyers in the school.
Okay, so part of this is to tighten that up. Items are supposed to be submitted through Peachjar for approval. That's our approved platform, and if they are not approved through there, they're not supposed to be going out. So there are times that things come home in backpacks that aren't necessarily following the process we've set forth, and this codifies that in policy of what's supposed to happen. And then, as well as, will, there'll be a regulation that really details and defines the procedures to follow. Does that answer your question?
Almost.
Okay.
Almost. I'm still trying to wrap my head around who decides.
Okay, so Peachjar comes before, those approvals go through the Communications Team, the Communications Department. I believe Mrs. Anderson reviews them largely and looks at board policies to make certain that it's meeting the requirements of board policy and the overall educational mission. So we did clean up the language. We talked about purpose, and really, it's our educational mission to make certain it, what comes forth ties to some aspect of educational intent or purpose or what we're promoting in the schools. So we don't want political advocacy groups, we don't want for-profit solicitation going home, things like that.
So this is different than our flyer policy?
Or if you're talking about things that get posted in the schools, like, for example, the military or the Giddians, that falls under a different policy.
Okay. It's KHC-R or something like that. It's a subpart of this. I just don't want us to have flyers in the school that are directly against what we say we're standing for.
And that's our intent, is to avoid that, and that's why we cleaned up the language.
Any other discussion, any other questions? All right, then we will move to the vote. We're voting to approve Proposed Changes to Policy KHC entitled Distribution and Posting of Community Information Materials in Schools. All those in favor? Opposed? Sustaining? Okay, so we have one abstention, five affirmative. Student member concurs with the affirmative, so we have a passed First Read. Thank you, Mrs. Ram. I have to say that I have in front of me three copies of this evening's agenda, two of which are revised and one which is plainly wrong. So at the start of the meeting, I was, I was reading from the wrong one and said that following new business, we would have the second part of the Superintendent's report. So I just want to make it clear that the Superintendent has finished his report unless he has something that he would like to say now.
Just one reminder, in observance of Association Day, WCPS, schools and offices will be closed this coming Friday, October 20th. Certainly hope our families and students enjoy a three-day weekend.
Thank you, Dr. Sobine. And now we will have Personnel Action, and we have Dr. Jennifer Webster, our Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, and Dr. Sobine. As discussed earlier during closed session, there are several staff changes for your review, and at this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Webster. Is there a motion?
President Williams? I move to approve the Personnel Action dated Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, as presented in closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Any questions? Okay, we're voting to approve the Personnel Actions as discussed in closed session earlier today. All those in favor of approval? We lost Mr. Bickford. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to reports to the Board. Those are our committee reports. So, Dr. Zettmeyer, would you like to begin with curtail and instruction, please?
CNI will meet November 16th, 10:00 a.m. at Williamsport Elementary.
Thank you. Mr. Guest, Facilities?
Yes, Facilities has not, we did not meet this month. Our next meeting is the 28th of November.
I have nothing to report.
All right. Policy Review and Development Committee, Mr. Bickford?
He's out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot he left. And Mr. Evans is not here, so we'll have a finance committee report. All right, under Miscellaneous Business, we have a list of future agenda items, and at this time, I would like to announce that we will not be having a work session on November 7th. We will be having our regularly scheduled closed session that day, but not the work session. So the agenda item that you see on November 7th will appear on an agenda later that month. Okay? Dr. Sobine has just reminded me that we will be meeting with the delegation on November 6th at Hagerstown Community College. So instead of the work session on the 7th, we will be meeting with the delegation on their Legislative Forum Day. Thank you for that reminder.
Do we have a time yet for that?
Pardon?
Do we have a time yet?
We don't yet have a time. It's sometime between their breakfast and their lunch. So whenever they fit us in, we'll let you know as soon as we know. Okay, that brings us to Board Member Comments. Would you like to begin down there, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, absolutely. First, I would like to start my comment tonight with a bit of a somber note. Kalia Wilson of Hartford County, a senior who was very involved with student council, student government, student leadership throughout the state up to the Maryland Association of Student Councils level, passed away a couple days ago. I'm unsure of the causes, but I wanted to honor her. I didn't know her personally, but I do know a lot of close friends who have been really affected by this, so I wanted to mention her. I'm a big proponent of advocacy and making your voice heard in any situation. That's why I sit on this dais tonight. That's why I do everything that I do. That's why I'm involved with student council up to the state level. That's why I do everything that I do. However, I cannot stand for when advocacy is weaponized and students are singled out and students who are crying out for help are ignored in favor of other issues that don't necessarily garner attention as much as the issue of students who are going through a horrific bullying experience, horrific ignorance, and scorn from their peers and from the news and from bodies all over the county, state, nation, world. I don't stand for the use of advocacy to weaponize and individualize students, and I believe that every student is equal, every student should be treated as so, every student. Thank you. That was my report.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Snyder, Mrs. Murray?
Didn't know if I said it better myself. Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that we talked about character counts tonight, and if you look going down our driveway, we have the pillars of character counts as you go down. So if you haven't noticed that before, they're there, and I think it's wonderful, and I like to look at them every time I drive up and down the driveway. And the other thing, I just have one more thing to say. I want to say hello to my friend Matthew from Western Heights. I know he's really working hard on his grades and especially trying to bring up that social studies grade, so I told him I'd give him a shout out and tell him to keep up the hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Bickford?
I feel bad that I didn't say something during the, when we were talking about the maintenance plan, but I had dinner the other night with a gentleman named Ed Peters who used to be the building supervisor for this building when it was Potomac Edison. And if you want to see somebody who's really proud, he has, I guess, had an opportunity to come through here, and he's so glad to see the building that he took care of for so many years in good hands and still being taken care of today. So Jeff, if you could pass that along to the staff that also care for this building, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Vice President Stauffer?
About two or three things real briefly. I attended the, along with some other Board members, the opening, the ribbon cutting, whatever you want to say about the aviation program at Williamsport High School. That's going to be an exciting program. I had the opportunity to attend a, I don't know what you would call it, but it was kind of an introduction at ramps with my great-grandson, who's in pre-K there. And quite frankly, I was a little worried about the great-grandson starting school because we try to work with him, and his attention span's not real great at times. He's going to be five in November. He missed the cutoff date to start pre-K last year. But every day that I do see him, he comes home, and I'll say, "Did you have fun in school today?" And he goes, "Yeah." And he's all smiles and everything, so I want to put a shout out to his teacher, Mrs. Brown, because she must be doing a fabulous job with those young individuals. Last thing, several of us, Board members, and Dr. Sobine and other staff members, had an opportunity to attend the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Conference in Annapolis. And the thing I like about attending that every year is because you get to talk to Board members from many of the other counties, the other LEAs and so forth, and sometimes I am amazed at the stories that they have to tell about what happens on their boards and so forth, and that's all I'll say. I'm just glad I'm on the Washington County Board of Education at times.
Thank you, Vice President Stauffer. Mr. Guest.
Anything I'd like to say? I'd like to thank the community that came out tonight to support the topic of bullying. I would like to say that I think our staff in all schools work very hard to keep our students safe. I think this Board has put the tools out there for them to do that, and they have a job of teaching, but I think all staff, from custodians to the teachers to safety personnel, look out for our students at all times. And I'm going to say that they probably can't protect them all to, the whole time, you know, because they can't see everything, that there's things going to slip through. But I think in all, I think our staff in general do a wonderful job of keeping our children, our students, safe, and I hope that that'll always continue because I think that's, most of our number-one priority is to keep our students safe and to keep them learning. So I think we just need to applaud all those folks that work very hard to do that. So to the community that came out tonight and ask us what we're doing, we are working very hard to keep your children and our students safe.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Dr. Zettmeyer?
My kids gave me this little sign when they were little, and it says, "Shoot for the moon. Even if you miss, you'll land among the stars." Despite several moves, this has never gotten lost, and all that to say, it's been a stellar week in Washington County. The showcase of bands, one of my personal favorite events of the year, included Sunburst by South High. The showcase of bands, one of my personal favorite events of the year, included Sunburst by South High. And if you've never seen our combined bands on the field, it's a must. It's truly a stellar experience. This year's America the Beautiful was conducted by North High's Jessica Maynor, and it was a tearjerker. My husband's first plane was a KIT. Our last was an AeroStar, which is a sweet little jet prop. And if you've ever piloted a plane, you know the difference. But if you want to build an airplane, we have a program for you. The ribbon cutting was wheels up on the Williamsport new aviation program, and they will build an airplane. Thank you, Dr. Willow, and Principal Scott Knoll, and visionary Adam Perry for the ability to enlist our community into this partnership for our students. Finally, this weekend I took a trip to the William Brish, my superintendent, planetarium. And it was out of this world. Our resource teacher at the planetarium is Alicia Robertson, and she highlighted the eclipse. But it was the space capsule in the courtyard that caught my attention. It's one of the three original Apollo eleven Columbia space modules. The first one flew. The second one is, is at Goddard. And the third one is here, yeah, right here in Washington County. So if you've missed it, shoot for the moon in the next couple of weeks and go see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zemeyer. It was truly an honor to participate in the ribbon cutting ceremony at the launch of the new WCPS aviation program at Williamsport High School. Great things are happening in our schools. We have strong academic programs, robust CTE programs, and expanding opportunities for apprenticeships, to name just a few. So thank you to everyone, to all stakeholders who actively advocate and partnership with our school system to help deliver on the promise of providing all students with a solid educational experience that will prepare them for a rapidly changing global society. Professional development has always been important to me. And I'm proud to say that in my three decades as an employee of Washington County Public Schools, I've had the very, very best. And I view participation in the annual MABE conference as my professional development as a board member. So on October second, third, and fourth, I was in Annapolis at the MABE conference. And at that conference, Dr. Gary Willow and a team of WCPS educators presented a hot topic session, the key component of a successful youth apprenticeship program. And that hot topic session was so very well-received. I heard compliments from numerous conference attendees, including President Crawford, our state Board of Education president. So it was a great time in Annapolis. I was able to attend several sessions that were just stellar. Rachel Heiss, who is the Executive Director of Accountability and Implementation Board, the AIB, was filling in for someone who was unable to be there, and she was really doing this on the fly. And that was very, a session that was very, very informative about blueprint funding. And Deb Daniel, who is MABE's Board Director of Legal and Policy Services, did a wonderful presentation on board governance and legal updates. And she, Mr. Staffer was with me in that session, and she did an excellent job reviewing Supreme Court cases and a lot of topics that have arisen in public comment and in the news. So it was just a great opportunity. It's, it's not cheap to send a board member to the MABE conference. But I want my colleagues to know that it's, it's well worth the money. We learn a lot. So thank you for that. Dr. Savine, did you want to have any final words?
Just one final comment, President Williams. You know, I just want to extend my appreciation to this board for making safety and security a priority. Thanks to your support, we have strong training programs and professional development that are in place for our support employees, our, our teachers, and our administrative staff. Each of our schools, we have trained professionals that are specifically prepared to provide support to the unique needs of our students and their families. We also have student support services, staff members from the central office that are trained to go out and provide additional support where necessary. When it comes to safety and security, simply emphasize if you see something, say something. When you say something, that allows our trained professionals to provide support.
Thank you, Dr. Savine. So colleagues, if there's nothing further, we are adjourned. Thank you.